Good evening. Welcome to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services public hearing to receive testimony regarding North Country Environmental Services, or NCES, application for expansion of the NCES landfill located in Bethlehem, New Hampshire. My name is Sarah Yiposkard and I'm the Assistant Director of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Waste Management Division. This evening, I'm serving as the Presiding Officer for this public hearing. We're using the GoToWebinar platform to conduct this online hearing so that participants are able to join us from the location of their choice. We're also providing remote access to this hearing from a gathering point at the Elks Lodge located at 42 Main Street in Bethlehem, New Hampshire. Michael Wimsat, Director of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Waste Management Division, is on-site in Bethlehem to facilitate connection of the gathering point to the online hearing. Please note that while some participants are gathered in Bethlehem, the hearing is fully online with only one hearing officer, myself. Therefore, it will be necessary for all participants, including those at the Elks Lodge, to listen to and follow the instructions that I provide. Director Wimsat, at this time, would you please confirm that our audio and video connections are working?
Yes, we can hear and see you fine. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call the hearing to order. For the record, it's Tuesday, August 2020, 2020, at 6:02 PM. This public hearing, the purpose of which is to receive comments on an application for expansion of the North Country Environmental Services Landfill, or NCES landfill located in Bethlehem, New Hampshire, is now officially open and is being recorded. My name is Sarah Yiposkard, Assistant Director of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Waste Management Division, and I'm the Presiding Officer for this public hearing. During the hearing, I may refer to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services as NHDES, the department, or DES. Erin Holmes, who also works at NHDES, is assisting us this evening by facilitating the participation of attendees through the GoToWebinar platform. At this time, Erin, who's located off-camera, is going to provide an introduction to the platform. Erin?
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening. I am Erin Holmes. You will hear from me periodically throughout the hearing as I provide instructions on how you can participate when the floor is open to ask questions or provide oral testimony. We will turn on and describe certain webinar functions during the times of the hearing when we are soliciting questions or testimony. You will notice an orange rectangle with a white arrow in the upper corner of your screen. Clicking this arrow will show the GoToWebinar dashboard that I will refer to when providing instructions further in this hearing. Right now, all attendees who have joined us remotely are muted with no video feed and you should be able to see and hear NHDES staff. Attendees will remain in this state until the floor is open, at which time we will turn on and describe certain webinar functions that will allow attendees to participate. I will provide detailed instructions on how to request to speak when we open the floor. Please note, when you are unmuted and speaking, NHDES and all other attendees will hear you, but your video feed will not be transmitted. If you are joining us as an attendee by telephone only, your participation is limited to listen only. We are unable to unmute you. However, later in the hearing, the hearing officer will provide instructions on providing written testimony if you would like to do so. We also have Julie Ashton of NHDES standing by to help if you need technical assistance. I will read her phone number and email address now and her contact information will be posted on the screen intermittently throughout the hearing. You can reach Julie Ashton by phone at (603) 271-7837 or by email at julie.ashton@des.nh.gov. That's Julie, J-U-L-I-E dot A-S-H-T-O-N at D-E-S dot N-H dot G-O-Z. That was an overview of how you will be able to participate in this hearing. Again, I will provide detailed instructions when attendees have the opportunity to participate. I am now going to turn over to our hearing officer, Sarah.
Thank you, Erin. I would like to give a moment to introduce you to the team that we have supporting this public hearing. The NHDES staff that you see on the video feed are located at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services office at 29 Casey Drive in Concord, New Hampshire. You see me at the center of the table. To my right is Jamie Colby, permanent engineer and supervisor of the Solid Waste Management Bureau, and to my left is Deborah Sonorever, also of the Waste Management Division. Supporting the hearing off-camera in Concord are Erin Holmes, who you met already, Tara Adler and Julie Ashton of the Waste Management Division, and David Cormier of the New Hampshire Department of Information Technology. NHDES staff are also on-site at the gathering point at the Elks Lodge located at 42 Main Street in Bethlehem, New Hampshire, to provide remote access to this hearing. Representing NHDES in Bethlehem are Michael Wimsat, Director of the Waste Management Division, Michael Turanti of the Waste Management Division, and Jean Rodigan of the New Hampshire Department of Information Technology. Also present in Bethlehem are Joe Yang and Kevin Rohn of NCES. As the hearing officer, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 as extended, NHDES is authorized to conduct this hearing electronically. To assist individuals without reliable internet access, NHDES is providing remote access through a shared communications portal at the Elks Lodge gathering point in Bethlehem. In accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing access to the hearing in three ways: online by GoToWebinar, in the host municipality, and by telephone. All participants online and at the gathering point have the ability to listen in real-time to this hearing through the GoToWebinar platform. And when invited by the hearing officer, online and gathering point participants will be able to speak through the GoToWebinar platform. Telephone participants are only able to listen to the hearing. In order to speak during the hearing, you will need to register for and join the webinar from a computer, an iOS, Android, or Windows 4 device, or participate in the hearing at the gathering point in Bethlehem, New Hampshire. The public notice for this hearing, which includes a link to register for and access the hearing, is posted on the NHDES Solid Waste Management Bureau's webpage under the Hot Topics section. If anyone experiences a problem with the GoToWebinar platform, please contact Julie Ashton. You can reach Julie by phone at (603) 271-7837 or by email at julie.ashton@des.nh.gov. Next, I would like to share a few important details about logistics. As you heard, Erin Holmes is the hearing facilitator. She will be assisting us in using and managing the GoToWebinar platform. You will hear from her occasionally with instructions on how to participate in the hearing using this remote access platform. She'll provide instructions at the appropriate time on how to ask questions and how to provide oral testimony. If you are located at the gathering point in Bethlehem, Director Wimsat will now point out the emergency exits. We'll pause for a moment while he does that.
So there are three emergency exits in this room, and one at the back of the room, and two on the side here. So if there were an emergency that required you to...
In the event of an emergency requiring evacuation of the Bethlehem location, this hearing will continue online. Evacuated participants can rejoin from another remote location of their choosing and provide testimony or a leave via the GoToWebinar platform or provide testimony in writing as specified in the public hearing list. If NHDES's internet connectivity fails, the hearing will be automatically closed. If it appears we can reestablish connectivity within a short period of time, the hearing will be reopened. If we cannot reestablish the online hearing tonight and did not cycle at least once through all of the speakers requesting to be heard, we will endeavor to reopen the remote access at work hearing at another date and time to be determined, and we will announce it to all persons who register to attend this hearing and post the announcement on the NHDES webpage. For those located at the gathering point in Bethlehem, if connectivity to the remote hearing fails and we cannot reestablish it, Director Wimsat will collect oral testimony by voice recording and it will be entered into the record. In addition to oral testimony, NHDES concurrently is in the middle of written testimony. The public comment hearing for receipt of written testimony will remain open through September 8, 2020, at 4 o'clock PM. Please submit written testimony as specified in the public hearing notice. Please understand that the purpose of this hearing is to receive oral testimony and to identify the concerns of citizens and governing bodies of the host municipality, counties, and districts, and other affected persons on a solid waste permit application submitted by NCES to the department. In the permit application, NCES is requesting that NHDES approve a modification of Solid Waste Facility Permit Number DES.SW.SP.03-002 to authorize an expansion of the NCES landfill located at 581 Trudeau Road in Bethlehem, New Hampshire into an area referred to as Stage 6. Notice of this hearing was posted, was published in the Littleton Courier on July 29, 2020, published in the Caledonian Brentford Big Dunder Edition on July 25, 2020, emailed to certain solid waste operators on July 30, 2020, published in NHDES's municipal Eagle Link Newsletter on July 31, 2020, mailed to the owners of the facility, the host municipality, and other affected entities as identified and required by the Solid Waste Rules, and posted on the NHDES website. If you're using GoToWebinar, you can review a copy of the hearing notice by clicking at the dashboard under the section titled "Canx." The hearing notice includes the date, time, and place of this oral hearing and information for obtaining a copy of the application for review. It also provides instructions on the deadline for submitting written testimony. Now let's review the hearing agenda. First, Jamie Colby will provide a brief overview of the NCES landfill and the application, and she will explain the solid waste permit application process and the criteria the department must use to make its decision to approve or deny the requested permit modification. Jamie will also explain where we are in the permit review process, where we are currently, and what the next steps will be after this hearing. Second, a representative of NCES will provide a description of the proposed landfill expansion and application. Third, we will accept public comment on the application in an orderly fashion. Anyone wishing to make oral comments for the department to consider during its review of the application will have the opportunity to do so during this hearing. We will take a five-minute break immediately before beginning to your public testimony. Jamie Colby will now provide information about the landfills, the application, and the solid waste permit application. Jamie?
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. As Sarah stated, my name is Jamie Colby. I'm an engineer in the Solid Waste Management Bureau at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. For context, the Solid Waste Management Bureau regulates the management of solid waste primarily by regulating the facilities that handle solid waste. We accomplish this through administration of a permitting system as required by the Solid Waste Management Act, RSA 149M. North Country Environmental Services, or NCES, operates a solid waste landfill in Bethlehem, New Hampshire that is permitted by the department. As authorized by RSA 149M, the department has adopted administrative rules that apply to solid waste management facilities statewide. As allowed by the New Hampshire Administrative Rules for Solid Waste Management, NCES has submitted an application to the department to expand its existing solid waste landfill in Bethlehem. At this time, I'm going to briefly describe the existing landfill and the application for expansion that we're here to receive testimony on. I will also explain how the department reviews an application like this. In a few minutes, we will hear a pre-recorded presentation from NCES that provides more detail, including NCES's perspective on the application. The NCES landfill is a commercially operated, privately owned landfill permitted to accept authorized solid waste from anywhere. The landfill has a footprint of approximately 46 acres. The permitted height of the landfill is elevation 1,483 feet, which is about 140 feet above Trudeau Road in the entrance gate. The landfill has a double liner system. That is, the waste is contained in two layers of a heavy-duty plastic liner. Leachate, which is liquid that has contacted or passed through landfill waste, is collected and conveyed rapidly off the landfill liner systems and trucked off-site for disposal. Landfill gas generated by decomposing waste is collected under vacuum and burned or flared off at the landfill. Flaring of landfill gas is regulated under the facility's air permit. Groundwater quality around the landfill is monitored multiple times per year. Groundwater monitoring is regulated under the facility's groundwater permit. The facility's air and groundwater permits are separate from its solid waste permit. As stated in the public notice, NCES proposes to add Stage 6, which includes an approximately 5.7-acre expansion. The proposed expansion would increase facility capacity by about 1.24 million cubic yards and extend the facility's life expectancy by about 5.3 years or through December 31, 2026. In addition to the application for expansion, NCES has requested a waiver of certain design requirements in the Solid Waste Rules relative to areas of the expansion that overlie previously built liner and leachate collection systems. Generally speaking, a review of an application occurs in two steps. The first step involves a completeness determination. That is, the department evaluates whether or not we have all of the information required by rule. The second step involves a technical review when we evaluate the technical details of the application and come to a decision. This is also the time when we collect and consider public comments. The first step of this process has been accomplished. The department has deemed NCES's application for expansion to be complete. Once we do that, we put out a notice stating that the application is available for public comment and we schedule a public hearing. That is where we are now. We are requesting public comment on NCES's application for expansion for consideration when making a decision on the application. We have not yet made a decision. While we are receiving public comments, the application is concurrently undergoing technical review. During the technical review of an application such as this, we look at the requirements specified in the New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules for an expansion, including siting, design, construction, operation, enclosure of the facility. For example, during the review of the design, we will evaluate whether the proposed expansion includes two liners, leachate collection systems, and stormwater management features that meet the technical specifications and performance criteria of the goals. The applicable siting, design, construction, operation, enclosure of landfills are found in Chapter ENV SW 800 of the New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules, which incorporates by reference various other rules found in Chapters ENV SW 900 through ENV SW 1100, as well as ENV SW 1400. Once we have received your comments and completed a technical review of the application, including the waiver application, we will issue a final decision. We have three options. We can deny the application. We can approve the application outright. Or we can approve the application with conditions. The Solid Waste Rules identify the explicit grounds for denial. The rules and the Solid Waste statute are available online through either the NHDES website or the state legislature's website. That is a brief overview of the facility, the application, and the review process. Sarah?
Thank you, Jamie. Representatives of North Country Environmental Services, Inc. have provided NHDES with a pre-recorded description of the planned landfill expansion for which they're seeking a solid waste permit modification. We will play that for you now.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing for the Stage 6 expansion at the North Country Environmental Services landfill located at 581 Trudeau Road in Bethlehem, New Hampshire. My name is John Yang. I'm an engineer with North Country Environmental Services in Solid Waste Systems, and we'll be going through this slide deck to present an overview of the proposed expansion. This slide depicts the service area that Solid Waste Systems and North Country Environmental Services provides across the state of New Hampshire, including six solid waste transfer stations, three calling divisions, one line landfill, and services as shaded here in green over 150 municipalities across the state. North Country Environmental Services controls just over 350 acres at 581 Trudeau Road. This figure represents the existing conditions relative to the line footprint at the facility. The area shaded in green represents stages 1 through 5 that equal approximately 46 acres at the facility. The gray shaded line depicts the limit of a facility in District 5 that North Country Environmental Services is entitled to develop within in accordance with the settlement agreement that the company has with the town of Bethlehem. This slide represents the proposed Stage 6 expansion area shaded in this figure in dark brown. So the expansion totals six acres and includes an area to the south and to the east of the facility adjacent to the existing footprint that's shaded in green. And once again, then the gray shaded line, which represents only District 5 within the town of Bethlehem's solid ordinance. This slide depicts the horizontal expansion in plan view of the proposed Stage 6 area. Once again, the existing landfill is in green. The dark brown would be the horizontal expansion of the facility in the area shaded in white-brown and gray depicts the soil burn and road that would be constructed to support the horizontal expansion of Stage 6. This figure represents the landfill in cross-section looking at the facility north to south. Once again, you can see the existing landfill shaded in green. The proposed Stage 6 expansion is shaded in dark brown and the soil burn shaded in tan. The maximum height of the facility is permitted at 1,403 feet, and you can see that the proposed Stage 6 expansion does not increase the overall height of the facility. This figure represents a side slope lining system in cross-section. This is a typical side slope lining system for landfills across the Northeast and is also in accordance with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services rules. So we'll describe the various layers all working our way from the bottom of the cross-section to the top. The first layer, the compacted filled burn. Once that layer is established, we place a 12-inch subbase layer, and this 12-inch subbase layer acts as the foundation to the containment system. This 12-inch layer of subbase is a native on-site glacial chill material that has been processed through a screening process. The next layer depicted by the black line here is the secondary liner. The secondary liner is 60 mil high-density polyethylene geomembrane. On top of the secondary liner is the drainage geoproposite, which is a synthetic material designed to rapidly and efficiently allow any liquids collected on top of the secondary liner to drain down to the subsoil landfill quickly. On top of the drainage geoproposite layer, the first gray layer, is the second black line. The second black line depicts the primary liner, which once again is 60 mil high-density polyethylene liner. On top of the primary liner is the primary drainage geoproposite. And like the secondary drainage geoproposite, it is a synthetic material designed to allow for a rapid removal of any liquids collected on top of the primary liner. On top of that gray, primary drainage geoproposite layer is the 18 inches of stone or sand that's placed on top of the primary drainage geoproposite. This layer acts as a cushion in the filter media to the primary drainage geoproposite and once again allows for efficient removal of any liquids collected on top of the primary liner. Then on top of that are the first layers in place that's placed in the... An application for a waiver from ENV SW 80507A1 and 80507B1 is being sought for the Stage 6 Type 1A permit modification request. While in accordance with regulation at the time, small sections of Stage 1, Phases 1 through 3 secondary collection system does not have the power required GeoNet. The purpose of the GeoNet and ENV SW 80507 is to rapidly convey flow collected over the liner system to its collection point. This rapid removal reduces the risk for any leakage through the containment system and allows operators to quickly react and to isolate any defect of the primary containment system. In this case, the performance of the secondary collection system meets performance standards and the need for a quick response to a primary liner defect and repair is no longer necessary as that first layer of waste was placed nearly 30 years ago. This waiver request can be approved because the performance of the existing Stage 1 secondary system meet current regulatory standard as detailed within the waiver request and precedent of approval for this same waiver request in 2013 for Stage 4 and in 2014 for Stage 5. The North Country Environmental Services landfill existing and proposed Stage 6 impact evaluation. The Stage 6 modification request proposes no change to the facility function, service type, and service area. The operations of the facility will remain consistent with the operations that has been experienced over the last 10 to 20 years. The Stage 6 expansion will provide capacity through the year 2026. The North Country Environmental Services landfill provides waste disposal capacity for over 150 municipalities across the state of New Hampshire, and that includes 50,000 households and 5,500 businesses statewide. So far in 2020, the waste accepted, 75% of that waste originates from within the state of New Hampshire. Those projections are expected to continue as the facility moves ahead. Of the 25% of the waste accepted that originates from outstate, some of that material is contaminated soil or other materials that could be beneficially reused. soil or other materials that could be beneficially reused in the landfill to help offset the need for native on-site material, such as daily cover and road mix. There is a capacity shortfall over the 20-year planning period in the state, and that capacity shortfall ranges from 3.8 billion tons to 21 billion tons based on in-state waste generation data that has been presented in annual facility reports for landfills across the state and by population data estimated by the State of New Hampshire Office of Energy and Planning. The availability of landfill capacity at New Hampshire facilities is further reduced by the increasing need for regional waste management which crosses state border. So there is a short and long-term need for the Stage 6 capacity because otherwise, with the facility at NCES closing in a few years, this would destroy the existing arrangements of over 150 municipalities that rely upon NCES to dispose of some or all of their waste with the closing. This would also accelerate the completion of other disposal capacity in the state and diminish competition among providers of waste disposal, thereby increasing disposal costs to the interests of citizens. Cassella Waste Systems and North Country Environmental Services is an essential part of the two integrated waste management system across the state, which includes the management of organics and recycling to help divert those materials from the main landfill disposal. In addition, approval of the Stage 6 capacity would assist the state in achieving the goals of its most recent solid waste management plan and plays a very important role to solid waste plans of multiple New Hampshire towns.
Now I'm going to offer the opportunity for participants to ask a question about the presentations that you've just heard. Please note that this is not the testimony portion of the hearing, rather it's your opportunity to ask questions about the presentations that you just heard. If you're located at gathering point in Bethlehem, please raise your hand and recall the call to provide your name to the NHDS staff who will provide your name to the hearing facilitator. For those who are accessing this publicly remotely from other locations, I'll turn the floor over to Erin Holmes, who will instruct us on how to ask questions about the presentation on the GoToWebinar platform. Erin?
Thank you, Sarah. This is Erin Holmes again, and I'm here to provide instructions on how our remote attendees can ask NHDS questions about the presentations you just heard. To do this, we will enable the GoToWebinar Raise Hand function. Anyone who wishes to ask a question can let us know by clicking the hand symbol to raise their hand. I will walk through specific instructions on how to do this in a moment. NHDS will be able to see attendees who have raised their hand. We will post a list of those requesting to ask questions on the GoToWebinar screen. Please note that the name posted will be the name under which you registered for the GoToWebinar. The hearing officer will call for questions in order that the names are posted. When the hearing officer turns the floor over to you to ask your question, we will unmute you and NHDS and all attendees, including those in Bethlehem, will be able to hear you. Please note that we will unmute you in the GoToWebinar platform. Please also make sure that you have not muted yourself. We have now enabled the Raise Hand function of GoToWebinar. You should see a green hand symbol in the GoToWebinar dashboard. If you would like to ask a question about the presentations, please let us know by clicking that hand symbol. It will turn red when you click it, as shown in the slide in front of you. If it is red, your hand is raised and we will know that you want to ask a question. We will lower your hand after you have asked your question. Please note that if you change your mind and you do not want to ask a question, you can simply click the hand symbol yourself to lower your hand. The symbol will change back to green, indicating that your hand is not raised. I will now turn the floor over to our hearing officer, Sarah Yuhas Fern, who will call you individually to ask your question. Please ensure that you have unmuted yourself. If you need technical assistance, please call Julie Ashton at 603-271-7387 or email her at julie.ashhton@des.nh.gov. Sarah?
Thank you, Erin. We will just take a moment so that our facilitators can enter the names that they have received, and you should be seeing a list on screen soon. Yes, we have names coming in. All right. Our first question will be from Adrian Bryant, and then we'll have Cheryl Jensen. Adrian Bryant, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Okay, Adrian Bryant, Bethlehem. I'm wondering if anybody can explain the waiver to me. I tried to understand what he was saying and had read it, but I really don't understand what they're asking a waiver for with Stage 1.
Thank you for your question. I'm going to ask Jamie Colby, our permanent engineer, to answer it.
Ms. Bryant, thank you for your question. NCES is requesting a waiver of the design requirements in 80507 that relate to that secondary or lower liner system. The rules now require that a GeoNet membrane be placed over the primary liner and other measures to ensure that leachate is moved rapidly off of the liner system. By moving leachate rapidly off the liner system, it reduces the chances of a leak.
Thank you. We will now mute you, and we will hear from Cheryl Jensen. After Cheryl Jensen, we will have Paul Nandico. Ms. Jensen, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You may need to unmute yourself first. You have the floor. We're not hearing you yet. You may need to unmute yourself.
There I am. I'm Cheryl Jensen. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, thank you.
Okay. I'm asking, this is a private citizen, but I'm not sure this is the time to ask it. It is a more general question about DES rules. I couldn't understand with the face masks whether there will be another time to ask questions.
This is the time in the hearing to ask questions, and we asked your questions to be focused on the presentations that you heard.
Well, I have a question. You can choose to answer it or not. Bethlehem has an ordinance against dumping sludge. What is DES's position on allowing sludge in landfills? Is there a rule that spells it out? And can Bethlehem enforce its ordinance, or does DES assume control? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Jamie Colby to address your question.
Ms. Jensen, thank you for your question. The local ordinance, or local ordinances in general, are enforceable by the municipality. The State Solid Waste Department is a separate item. Generally speaking, each permit or requirement is separate. So if the municipality has an ordinance relative to sludge management, my understanding is that the authority for enforcing that ordinance lies with the municipality. With regards to your question about solid waste rules and sludge management, there are not specific rules at this time related to sludge management at a landfill. There are general rules that the landfill committee or operator is required to control nuisance conditions such as odors, noise, and litter. Thank you. Sharon?
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Jensen. We are going to mute you now, and next we will hear from Paul Nandico. Mr. Nandico, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Hi. My name is Paul Nandico. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, good. I just had, I have two questions, actually, I'd like to ask them. I don't know, they're brief, they're very brief questions. One, I just wondered if, just to clarify, is it that the runoff can be hauled away or that it is hauled away? And then the other one was, I was just wondering how long they anticipated the Stage 5 to have lasted that started in 2015?
Thank you. And I'm going to make a blanket apology right now for any mispronunciations that I make of people's names. I'm going to ask Jamie Colby to answer your questions.
Thanks, Sarah. Runoff or leachate is trucked away from the landfill. So NCES collects it in storage tanks on-site, transfers it to liquid haul trucks, and drives that south to various wastewater treatment plants. With regards to how long Stage 5 is supposed to last, the department's current interpretation is that it is supposed to last through April 16, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nandico, we are going to mute you now, and next we will hear from Sarah Dusset. Mr. Dusset, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you. This is Sarah Dusset. This is a general question. Are you able to say what percentage of the waste coming into the state through Cassella is recycled by them?
Thank you for your question. I'm going to ask Jamie Colby to answer it.
Ms. Dusset, thank you for your question. I don't have that figure on me at this time. That information should be available in the facility's annual facility report, which can be accessed through New Hampshire DES's One Stop database. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will be from John Swan. Mr. Swan, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. My question is, when was the last time a, the height of the landfill was actually surveyed? And whether from DES or an independent surveyor, as well as the existing capacity for Stage 5? So I guess my question is, when has an independent, non-Cassella-employed surveyor assessed the existing capacity of Stage 5 at the landfill? And when was the last time the height was surveyed? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I'm going to ask Jamie Colby to address it.
Mr. Swan, thank you for your question. That information is available in the facility's record on One Stop. I do not have that date off the top of my head. My apologies. Please go to the record on One Stop.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Mr. Swan. We will just pause for one moment to see whether there are any other individuals who would like to ask questions. If you would like to ask a question, please use the Raise Hand function if you're remotely using GoToWebinar, or if you're in Bethlehem, please raise your hand and give the name to NHDS staff who will provide it to us. Seeing no additional questions, oh, perhaps we have an additional question? Okay. Our next question is from Cheryl Jensen. Ms. Jensen, when I give you the floor, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Yes, my name is Cheryl Jensen. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. You've mentioned One Stop several times for getting the information. DES has to be aware that One Stop often does not work. Often. Is DES aware of that?
We have One Stop working all the time, clearly. And there are sometimes times when One Stop is down. There's information on our website where you can provide your name and get assistance with One Stop or provide information on outages on One Stop, and I would encourage you to do that. Thank you for your question. Next, we have a question from Andrew Bryant. Ms. Bryant, when I give you the floor, please begin by stating your name. Ms. Bryant, you have the floor.
Andrew Bryant. In the presentation, they talked about the need for Stage 6 because Stage 5 is almost running out. However, they've known for eight years that they were supposed to be ending, so I'm wondering why they had planned for, and I know, I don't know if anybody from DES, I don't know if Jamie can answer that, but why they had already been planned for since they're supposed to be to capacity in April?
Ms. Dusset, thank you for your question. It's outside of the area of questions that we're able to answer tonight, but we're noting your questions. Next, we have a question from Andrew Bryant. Ms. Bryant? Wait, Ms. Bryant, if you have a question, when I give you the floor, please begin by stating your name.
So, this is Mike. That was Andrew Bryant. I think the next person, John Swan.
Thank you. Next, we have John Swan. Mr. Swan, when I give you the floor, please begin by stating your name.
Okay, great, thank you. First off, I guess one question would be, since there have been several questions asked, but there's not a lot of questioners, perhaps DES could go ahead and find those answers within that vast array of data at One Stop for us relative to our particular questions? Would that be agreeable?
For the question, thank you for your question. For the question where you have been referred to One Stop, your best course is to look information up on One Stop or you mention a right-to-know request. And on our website, there is a portal to submit right-to-know requests. Thank you.
But again, I think there's only been like three or four questions that were relative to specific information that I would think DES would have that information handy and save us some time digging through those files. Is that possible? Like, for example, the last time a height survey was performed as well as a capacity survey? And then I know Ms. Bryant had a question that I think you referred her to One Stop as well. We've all been to One Stop, but it is, you know, there's a lot of data there, and these are questions I think that are specific to the landfill and this hearing. They have bearings, so I would think that DES could find those answers for us and maybe get back to, not obviously right away, but it could help us out. Is that possible?
Mr. Swan, we will provide response to all the public comments that we received at the public testimony portion of this hearing.
All right, then I will ask that during my public testimony. My second question, though, is, can you tell me, based on the first Plan A application that was not denied, there were numerous instances throughout that application where DES noted in February during the application review summary that there were numerous instances of certain design requirements not meeting the statutes or the rules? For example, on page 12, there was the absence of the drainage geocomposite or composite liner. Can you tell us how many of those does not satisfy requirements from the Plan A are carried over into Plan B in terms of not being addressed?
Thank you for your question. The viewing period related to the application at hand. And as far as determining which requirements are addressed, that will be part of our review of the application. Thank you. This will conclude the questions section of the evening. And we are now going to turn off the raise hand function and move to the testimony portion of the hearing. Our objective this evening is to give everyone who wishes to speak a reasonable opportunity to do so. In a few moments, we will provide instructions on how to provide oral testimony at the gathering point in Bethlehem and using GoToWebinar platform. Before we proceed with those instructions, I would like to explain ground rules for the testi- testimony portion of the hearing. After you've provided your name according to the upcoming instructions, I will call upon people to speak in the order displayed on the GoToWebinar screen. Based on the number of attendees, I request that you limit your testimony to three minutes. Deborah will be monitoring the time and will show you the yellow card when you have one minute left. When you see the yellow card, please start wrapping up your testimony. When Deborah shows you the red card, that means that your time is up. Please graciously yield the floor without significant delay so that I can call the next speaker in line. We are frequently asked whether our speaker can yield their time to another speaker of their choice. I want to make it clear that this practice will not be allowed in this hearing. Instead, we're going to cycle through the list of names as many times as needed to give everyone the time that they need to provide their comment. In other words, the person you might wish to yield your time to would have plenty of opportunity to testify. They just need to request to testify and wait for their turn in line. When I call your name, if you decide you did not wish to speak at that time, let me know. I will place your name at the end of the list to be called on after all the other speakers have cycled through once. If you're at the gathering point in Bethlehem and wish to turn in written testimony this evening, please place it in designated box to be received stamped with the word as part of the official record. If you're accessing this hearing remotely, please submit written testimony as instructed in Notice of Public Hearing. As a reminder, a copy of the hearing notice is available in the GoToWebinar slide deck under Handout and on the NHDES website. We often receive questions about how someone receives notice when the NHDES issues a decision on the application. Everyone who registered to attend the hearing remotely or who filled out a testimony card with their contact information will be placed on the list for receiving notice when a decision on the application is issued. Those folks who did not fill out a testimony card or register for the hearing but want to receive notice of the decision can contact the Solid Waste Management Bureau by email at swpublic.com-des.nh.gov or by calling 603-271-292-FAC. This hearing is being recorded at the gathering point in Bethlehem and using the GoToWebinar platform and in this room at NHDES headquarters. Therefore, during the public testimony section, please speak clearly and start your testimony by stating your name. If you forget to do so, I will briefly instruct you to remind you. If you are located at the gathering point in Bethlehem and would like to provide oral comments, please fill out a testimony card and place it in designated box if you've not already done so. NHDES staff will provide your name to you. If you're accessing this public hearing remotely, please listen closely to the instructions of the hearing facilitator, who will explain how to provide oral testimony using the GoToWebinar platform. And?
Thank you, Sarah. This is Erin Holmes again. And this time, I'm here to provide instructions on how to provide oral testimony. As a reminder, these instructions are not applicable to our telephone-only attendees who are in listen-only mode. For oral testimony, we will enable the GoToWebinar question function. Using this function, you will let NHDES know you would like to provide oral testimony by entering your identifying information into the GoToWebinar question box. I will walk through specific instructions on how to do this in a moment. Please note that we are not actually soliciting your comments or testimony through this function. We are using the GoToWebinar's question function to identify who would like to be called upon to provide oral testimony and to assist us in tracking testimony. Please enter your name, your address, including your street name and number, and who you represent in the question box. The information typed in the question box is not your testimony, and you do not need to type any substantive content in this box. In order to be added to the list to provide oral testimony, you must enter your name, address, and who you represent. We traditionally attempt to provide state senators and state representatives the opportunity to speak first, and we would like to do so during this hearing. If you are a senator or representative and would like to be called upon early in the queue, please start your question with senator or representative. We will attempt to put you up in front of the queue. The question function of GoToWebinar is now enabled. You should see the question box in the GoToWebinar dashboard. If you want to provide testimony, please type your name, address, and who you represent in the question box. Then hit Enter to submit. We will be monitoring a list of attendees who are submitting this information and will place your name in the queue. The hearing officer will use that list to call on you one at a time to provide your testimony. Remember that if you need technical assistance with getting onto the list to provide testimony, Julie Ashton of NHDES is available by phone or email. I will save her contact information now. You can reach Julie by phone at 603-271-7837 or by email at julie.Ashton@des.nh.gov. I will now turn the floor back over to the hearing officer. Sarah?
Thank you, Erin. We will now take a short break, and you will see our video feed turn off for the break. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. Director Williams, would you please confirm? Can you still hear and see us? Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, our objective this evening is to give everyone who wishes to speak a reasonable opportunity to do so. If your testimony will not fit inside the allotted time of three minutes, you're welcome to resume during this subsequent round testimony. Also, please pay respect to each other. There are many differing viewpoints represented by the participants of this hearing, and many of the issues are emotionally charged. Therefore, I hope that all participants honor this process of being able to hold a public hearing and curtail various viewpoints and concerns by extending each other courtesy and fidelity. We will begin hearing oral testimony at this time. When I call your name, please be sure that your microphone is not muted and that you speak clearly so that we can hear you. You will begin by stating your name and then proceed with your comments. We have multiple people who've indicated that they would like to provide testimony. Our first person will be John Swan. And then we will have Andrew Bryant. Mr. Swan, when I turn the floor over to you, please start by stating your name. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is John Swan. I live in Dalton, New Hampshire. And I am the founder of the group Safe Force Lake. And, um, I would have to say that I am here to ask DES to, once again, do the right thing and deny the Stage 6 expansion permit. One of the main things I, I find wrong with this and the fact that DES is always talking about the rules and regulations, the laws, the RSA. So I have to say that with the, uh, your February 12, 2020, application review summary, where you cited numerous instances where the application for the Type 1A permit modification waiver of certain design requirements does not satisfy the requirement, including the absence of a drainage geocomposite or composite liner in a portion of Stage 1 with no leak detection and location system, which obviously the rules require, tells you right there that this permit needs to be denied. So working from there, I would like to, I would like to mention RSA 149M11, which, from the Solid Waste Management Chapter of the revised statutes, talks about the public benefit requirement. And it states in there, number one, letter C, facilities necessary to meet state solid waste capacity needs must be designed and operated in a manner which will protect the public health and the state's natural environment. And so with that, I have to say, there's a current lawsuit in federal court against this landfill operation due to the illegal discharge of pollutants into the Ammanus River in violation of the Federal Clean Water Act. So I ask New Hampshire DES, is this a concern that you will take into consideration in your decision? Second, there have been detections of 1.4 dioxide and DCDFM-312 in groundwater monitoring results, as well as elevated PFOS levels. Will this worsen or improve with time as more waste is added to this potential superfund site? Is that noise telling you something? Is my timer up?
Not yet.
Okay. And, and third, will six more years of trash coming to this facility, will it increase? Have any impact on the millions of gallons of leachate that are produced yearly and shipped down to the Concord and Franklin wastewater treatment plants? Neither of which have the ability to treat for PFOS removal. And those PFOS obviously contributing to a higher level of PFOS in the effluent going into the Merrimack River. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen. Next, we will hear from Andrew Bryant. Ms. Bryant, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by starting your, stating your name. You have the floor.
I'm Andrew Bryant. I'm speaking as a private citizen. And good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns. Those of you who've been reviewing and approving permits for our country environmental services for years may be as surprised as I am that this permit application is even on the table. You will remember that in 2011, the John Casella signed a settlement agreement with the town of Bethlehem that promised that NCS would never expand further if the town approved the 10 acres. This agreement included the end of lawsuits filed between NCS Bethlehem, as well as the promise that NCS would not purchase any more land in Bethlehem. And thus, the landfill would be capped in about April 2021. So why are we being faced with this expansion? Well, NCS broke their compromise and purchased 100 adjoining acres. Then, in 2018, NCS filed $200,000 of payment, despite the fact that they supplied the figures that their taxes were based on. To avoid more expensive and likely legal fights with NCS, the Bethlehem Select Board advised by council to enter into another settlement agreement. In the eyes of many, NCS used this payment to trick the town into agreeing to allow them to expand. The suspicion is magnified since NCS has had the Select Board sign a confidentiality agreement so voters can't even know the details of the settlement. The suspicion is also because, see, in 2012, many people voted to accept the 10 acre expansion because they believed it would mean the town would finally be done with more garbage being trucked from multiple states polluted in our environment. But NCS broke that agreement and purchased more land. They proved their intent to landfill because in 2017 and 2018, NCS had one article on our ballot asking for a 100 acre acre expansion. Naturally, the town voted the most down. The town does not want further expansion. Stage 6 is a manipulation by this untrustworthy company. Another concerning aspect of Stage 6 is that NCS plans to use land outside District 5. District 5 is the only zone in which landfill activity is allowed. The bordering land that they bought, even though they promised they wouldn't, is actually District 2. The Bethlehem zoning ordinances, Article 3A, Pulpin 1, provides, uh, proves this, uh, this is prohibited. I don't quote, and then I'll finish after this, and we'll come back. No solid waste disposal facility or expansion of any existing solid waste facility or landfill shall be located in any district except District 5. I am not sure how the board was tricked into accepting the terms of the payment settlement that included this expansion, especially permitting land to be used outside of District 5. I can only suspect that it was because the town was trying to avoid and was wary of being sued by NCS. And I'll have to come back.
Ms. Bryant, thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Brian Cook. And then, uh, we have Martin Flavel. Mr. Cook, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Uh, I am Brian Cook. I have a, um, a letter written, and I'm gonna just read the proportions of it. Earlier this year, NHCS found that the Stage 6 expansion application did not demonstrate a worthwhile public benefit to allow the expansion. NCS made modifications to the application to reduce the fill rate so that the life expectancy of this expansion would be extended through 2026. The adjusted expansion fill rate would average out to be 0.23 million cubic yards per year. Even with NCS closing April 21, the state of New Hampshire has permitted capacity through 2025 and near capacity, a very small deficit, through 2026. And this is from the graph that's in your, your bi- biannual solid waste report 2019. So the question is, is this additional capacity of 0.23 million cubic yards for 2026, does that demonstrate a worthwhile public benefit? The town has said no multiple times. By allowing this expansion, it's just gonna add five more years of discontent. And it, and it really, it's almost a break even between permitted capacity and the demand for that one year. Also, a trash hauler, you know, can transport approximately 125 cubic yards of trash. This equates to 1871 truckloads per year if you do 50 weeks a year, five days a week. This is, uh, this is seven and a half truckloads a day. I know personally, I have seen these haulers queued up on Route 3 waiting for the 6:30 opening. Seven and a half trucks for a day. What's, uh, NCS gonna do? Open at 6:30 and close at 5:00? It doesn't seem to make economical sense for NCS to really do what they're planning on doing here. And also, the viability of this expansion is dependent on building a berm outside District 5. Well, land is not zoned for landfill activities. And I know that there was an agreement, between the Select Board and NCS, looking at the November 18 meeting minutes. The Select Board referring to these two acres, which is the setback area of land, the 100-yard setback. But somehow, this two acres has turned into a 5.71 acre expansion plan. And that is, I believe, because the berm has been moved outside of District 5. So, the berm is a landfill component. A landfill is not viable without it. So, the berm is a landfill component, a landfill is not viable without it. 100-foot, 100-foot setback requirement from the property line has applied to the berm in the past. Also, the BTLA formula has included the berm waving.
Your time is up, I need to ask you to wrap up.
Well, okay. I'm wrapping up by saying that any expansion outside of District Five, as the berm is outside District Five, is going to require a town, a town vote to whether to approve that or not, because this is no longer within the District Five boundaries.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Martin Ravel, and after that, we have Michael Culver. Mr. Ravel, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
This is Michael Glavac, G-L-A-V-A-C. Thank you for arranging this meeting tonight. I am speaking here tonight in favor of the proposed Stage Six landfill expansion. And most of my statement tonight will be repetition of the one from, we heard, from what I said last, last year at Crowell School. And most of everything that you, you've heard tonight, we've been hearing for years and years and years, but here we are again. I do want to address the, the trickery that the Select Board was duped into with the last settlement agreement. I was a Select Board member with the last abatement agreement. I speak here as a private citizen. But the Select Board wasn't tricked into signing that agreement. And it's not an agreement between the Select Board and, and NCS, it was an agreement between the town of Bethlehem and NCS. And the Select Board made that agreement as it was stated in the public, because it was in the best interest of the town to proceed with that agreement. I do have to say, I know that you're doing your job, I know that you had a reason to deny the, the application last year, but I, I am a little disappointed that, that you didn't approve it last year because it, it came at a, at a financial expense of the town. Because the Select Board was counting on extra revenue for the town, the revenue from, from NCS is a warp to town. So, back to my original statement, I have lived in the town of Bethlehem for the last 12 years, and I've heard the fight between the town and NCS described as David versus Goliath. I would describe it as saint versus Satan, and we can transpose those terms to each side, whichever side you're on. But I could say that landfill has been a good neighbor to the town of Bethlehem. And, you know, what I see here tonight, this is what I said last year also, is I see a celebration of environmental activism that has brought us, that has brought DES to, to our, to our society. And with DES, we see the line manfields that we act today instead of leaching, being leached into the, into the ground like we've seen with manfields in the past. I'm going to leave it at this for now because I'll come back later. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Michael Culver and then Jeanne Robelard. Mr. Culver, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Hi, I'm Michael Culver, 1315 Cherry Valley Road, Bethlehem, New Hampshire. I'm speaking tonight to speak in favor of this expansion on the public benefit, you know, I think is, is extremely high. The town of Bethlehem just in itself can't afford to lose the revenue that, that will be generated by this expansion to help keep our tax rate somewhat stable, if not climbing any higher than it already is. And the town's not prepared to do anything with its waste. They just don't have a, a solution to provide the services that NCS currently provides for the town. Not to mention the 150 other towns that are depending on, on this, this landfill and all the small contractors and I could go on and on that, that, you know, depend on, on this space if you local and not have to truck it any farther. And it's, you know, it's been a good site, they've been a good neighbor. I, you know, I'm, I'm all for the expansion and hope you guys consider the, the entire public benefit and the economic benefit and not only to the town of Bethlehem, but especially the town of Bethlehem because our, our tax rate depends on it. There's a lot of revenue generated from the tipping, tipping fees. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Jeanne Robelard and then Shayna Casper. Ms. Robelard, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you, I'm Jeanne Robelard. Good evening, everyone. I don't have a prepared testimony. Quite frankly, I have stood in front of this body at meetings for 22 years and I don't think there's anything left that I can say that you haven't already heard from me. I've talked about the environmental equity policies, how does Bethlehem fit into that? Safety issues, Casella's long history of violations, the SEEP, Casella's lies about the SEEP, the aesthetic cleanup of the SEEP because actually correcting the damage is not possible, the public benefit, more accurately, the lack thereof. I've talked, written letters, attended meetings, and even sang at you about the dump that never ends. I've asked the DES to right the great wrong that was perpetrated by them, not you folks, a different administration, but that's where it started, 2003. I call it the Great Wrangling of Bethlehem, where you did an end run around the court and you approved a permit before a court decision that would have affirmed our right to uphold our zoning. It was wrong. It was so wrong, you need a new word for wrong to describe that wrong. And that was 17 years ago. Here we are. I believe the DES is directly responsible for the suffering perpetrated on this town because you approved a permit you never should have before a court decision. We're here today, you still have the power, you have the authority, you have the statutes and 149M. You can deny this expansion, you can right that great wrong. One of the happiest days of my existence, it was on December 12, 2008, you actually denied a permit. It was historic, well, for Bethlehem. And again, when this permit expansion most recently was denied, one of the best days of my life here in Bethlehem. So, I'm going to ask you again, do you want to be the administration that takes responsibility for continuing the great wrong of 2003? Or do you want to be the administration that actually liberated Bethlehem from this travesty of justice? I sincerely hope it is the latter and not the former. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Shayna Casper, and then we will hear from Heidi Tramarco. Ms. Casper, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
My name is Shayna. My name is Shayna Casper. I'm the New Hampshire State Director with Community Action Works, formerly known as Toxic Action Center, and I'm here to call on the DES to deny this permit. At Community Action Works, we believe that environmental threats are big, but that the power of well-organized community groups is bigger, and that's why we work side by side with everyday people to confront those who are polluting and harming the health of our communities. And we put them with people who are most impacted by environmental problems, training them on the know-how anyone would need to make change in their own backyard. Because we know that when neighbors know how to make change, build the power to transform our world. We've been working with residents in Bethlehem for several decades writing this proposal. And based on years of experience of this landfill near Bethlehem and similar proposals elsewhere across New Hampshire and across the region, I want to raise some strong concerns about this application and ask that you also extend the public comment deadline and to deny the permit. First, we need to move away from landfilling and incinerating trash. The EPA itself said that all landfills eventually leak and what they leak is toxic. And any claims that technology that will protect our groundwater communities by waste industry representatives are, are just can't be true, aren't true. And as you know, this landfill has a long history of pollution violations. In the May of 2018, Toxic Action Center Conservation Law Foundation filed a citizen's suit showing evidence of discharge of pollution from existing, existing landfill into the Ammanusic River without a national pollution discharge elimination permit. A drainage channel, that seep that Jeanne just talked about, has been funneling leachate into the river. And in addition to threats to groundwater, landfills give off potentially harmful gases and odors that permeate the neighborhoods. Secondly, landfills accept toxic waste that threatens our health. Over 80,000 chemicals today are on the market, many of which are known to adversely affect human health. And landfills are vulnerable to receiving toxic waste that can jeopardize the health of those who live nearby. And when dumped into landfills, products containing these harmful chemicals can leak out and contaminate aquifers, vaporize into the air and to more. Contaminants detected in this landfill include iron, manganese, 14 dioxide, and PFAS. And to protect the quality of life for granite feeders living not only near landfills, but also incinerators, construction siloed debris processing facilities, and trash transfer stations, we must be sure that harmful materials are not improperly disposed of. And as we speak, my third point is that we are not creating a plan for the future. Expanding Bethlehem landfill is not solved by New Hampshire's waste problem. When this landfill closes, whether it be in 2020 or 2026, there will still be no plan in place to transition our system away from burning and burning our trash and instead moving towards a zero waste future. New Hampshire needs a plan to reduce, reuse, recycle, compost, or solid waste rather than doubling down on polluting. And I guess I'll continue my comments after.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Heidi Tramarco, and then we'll hear from Sarah Dusset. Ms. Tramarco, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
My name is Heidi Tramarco, and I'm with the Conservation Law Foundation, and we will be submitting written comments, but I will summarize our overall comments here. CLF is recommending that New Hampshire DES deny the permit for the expansion. The proposed expansion does not satisfy the substantial public benefit requirement of RSA 149M 11, and we believe that DES's analysis was correct the first time in the comments for the, DES's comments on the first permit application for the expansion. So, the proposed expansion doesn't satisfy the three criteria for this substantial public benefit, being, the, the first criteria A is that there is no capacity need for this expansion. It's not needed to address New Hampshire waste. New Hampshire DES does not project a shortfall for New Hampshire waste, and New Hampshire DES should continue to make their determination of capacity based on their own numbers and data and calculations and not use the NCS numbers that have been presented in this modified application. Using the New Hampshire DES data, we can see there is more than enough capacity, including with the spend, planned expansion of other facilities in our state to get us through at least the next 10 years. If the state want to add more capacity at this time, that would really just be to add out-of-state waste, additional out-of-state waste to New Hampshire. And so, you know, relying on New Hampshire DES data, as DES did in its first determination, we urge DES to, again, find that there is no capacity need and that that criteria is not met. The criteria B for substantial public benefit, there is no demonstration here that this project, the expansion, will meet the state's hierarchy in gold. As we know, landfilling is the least preferred method of solid waste management in the hierarchy, and NCS hasn't provided any new information here, any new efforts to show an increase in diversion or recycling. Instead, NCS seems to be relying on Casella's collective pre-existing recycling efforts throughout the state. And simply operating a recycling company in other locations in the state isn't enough to show that this project would promote the state's hierarchy in gold. NCS goes to show that this expansion would contribute to the state's hierarchy goals. They could show increased diversion or propose a change to current landfilling practices that would specifically advance those goals and divert from landfilling. NCS has claimed that the 40% goal diversion goal has expired is not accurate, and NCS can't demonstrate that it's meeting that goal by pointing to this collective Casella recycling efforts throughout the state. The permit application here must stand on its own. And that goes to the final criteria C, which, you know, we probably, the DES can reverse its division here that criteria C hasn't been met without finalizing an update to the law or reduce solid waste management plan, which hasn't been updated since 2003.
Please wrap up your testimony.
Yeah, I'll wrap it up right here. Just one of those two points here, this NCS's argument that the plan has somehow been wounded by the passage of time is without merit, there's no evidence by that. The plan is still relied on by state regulators and the Waste Management Council and DES. And if NCS is arguing that it is somehow contributing to the state Waste Management Plan goals, they should provide the data to support that claim, they should provide the tonnages, the evidence that they are somehow contributing to recycling, and what are, what is the diversion tonnage?
Your time is up. Next, we will hear from Sarah Dusset. Ms. Dusset, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Sarah Dusset of Whitefield. A greetings, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm abbreviating my comments that I'll submit later. I want to speak to the bigger picture of how this decision on Stage Six is pivotal for the reform of solid waste management in New Hampshire at a time when everybody acknowledges that a new vision is desperately needed. I have two underlying themes. First, it's been clear to the legislature and the tenor citizens since 1990 or before that landfilling is the least divided means of dealing with our trash and the out-of-state trash that comes along with it when we contract with private companies like Casella. And second, the mission of DES has to be noted, it says nothing about fostering the economic advantage of out-of-state commercial landfill corporations like Casella. DES's mission is, quote, "to help sustain a high quality of life for all citizens by protecting and restoring the environment and public health in New Hampshire." The solid waste division mandate reiterates those values. Why Casella has enjoyed the foothold that many of us are trying to dislodge tonight, even after Bethlehem has voted Casella out of town more times than most of us can count? Why have they had this foothold? It seems that Casella has filled a void in legislative and regulatory capacity and willpower for decades in New Hampshire. It would be easy to lean into Casella again now with their short-term solution for solid waste management, more and more trash piling up in the White Mountains. It is widely acknowledged that this relatively cheap and dirty system has to stop as soon as possible. The Stage Six expansion request is the perfect opportunity to change course. There is no capacity need in our state from all indications that I can find as I have searched over months for credible information. Carberry and Turnkey appear to be entirely capable of meeting the capacity needs of the state for some decades to come. Permitting Stage Six here and then Dalton's designated Granite State landfill would be a tragedy because as the field of dreams move the test, if you build it, they will come. Let's cut off further landfill development first in Bethlehem with this permit being denied and ultimately in Dalton, too. Let's not expand capacity at either site. Expansion now would upend our long-held statewide dream of cutting down on landfill dependence. Casella's perceived service to New Hampshire's solid waste management program has run its course. Area towns are adamant that they don't want to host landfills. That is an unrespectable indication that landfills are a flawed system to be rethought and replaced. While I have heard solid waste management officials attest repeatedly that they are guided in part by public input, albeit to an extent that they will not quantify, I've also listened to many citizens' questions. Hasn't been answered by the statement that solid waste management personnel must be guided by rules and regulations after seeing applications. That's the limit of the decision-making purview. This leaves me thinking that only comments directed at rule violations are pertinent. I'll finish up, which brings me back to DES's wonderful mission statement. I ask you to stand back far enough to see your mission alongside the state's clear avowal of wanting a new system for solid waste management. Denial of the Stage Six expansion would be the ultimate public benefit. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony. We have cycled once through all of the individuals who have requested so far to provide testimony. At this time, if anyone would like to give speech again, if you're in Bethlehem, please please indicate so to the NHDES staff, and they will get your name added to the bottom of the list. If you are participating remotely and would like to speak again, please submit your identifying information using the question box. And if you are someone who hasn't testified yet but would still like to, you also may do so. We'll pause for a moment while we wait to see if there are more folks who would like to speak. I'm going to ask that if you're looking to get your name added to the list again, please do provide your name, mailing address, and your affiliation and in the question box. Next, we're going to hear from Shayna Casper. Ms. Casper, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you. You're looking at Shayna Casper, Community Action Works. I just wanted to continue my comments. As I was cut off, I was talking about how we're not creating a plan for the future. We need to actually move to solving New Hampshire's waste problem. And just listed some concerns there. So because of these and other concerns, the residents of the town of Bethlehem have voted against the landfill expansion, as you know, twelve times. And as has been mentioned already as well, in 2011, an agreement was maintained not expand the landfill or seek additional permits. And this, I know, clearly is facing to be no expansion of that facility. And then in 2019, the DES Waste Management Division received a request for a stage-six expansion permit imposing within the town boundaries and outside of District Five directly violating the 2011 MOU. So not only would the landfill have been a threat in human health and the environment, it would breach this previous agreement. And finally, I just want to argue that the public comment process has been undemocratic, that we're in the middle of a global pandemic. It's summer in the gateways to the White Mountains, and families are interestfully getting ready to head back into school. So surely, these are outstanding circumstances to require additional public outreach and engagement. And the comments are due September 8th, the day following a federal holiday. And as the plaintiff in the Before-Cent Clean Water Act suit, I assumed that I would be notified about this public hearing. But as far as I could see, I was not notified by the NHDES, by email or any other means, about this public hearing. And links posted on Facebook and elsewhere were broken and did not lead to the required page. And as has been mentioned, one stock has also been down several times recently. And for these reasons, I meant to request an extension of the public comment period as well. I also have a plan on submitting written comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from John Swan, and following Mr. Swan, from Andrew O'Brien. Mr. Swan, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is John Swan. And, you know, first off, I guess I'd like to say relative to Sarah Dusset's testimony, I'd like to say ditto. She really did a great job of summarizing what so many of us are trying to say here. I mean, New Hampshire DES, your mission is to protect the public health and the state's natural environment. So by allowing for this controversial company to expand its controversial toxic landfill, it just runs contrary to your mission. And so I ask that you not only consider repeating what you did in February, March with your, I'm using air quotes, denial of the first stage-six permit-expansion application, but also it's time to close this chapter for the people of Bethlehem and put this twenty-five-year nightmare behind them. It's time to close this landfill and be done. As so many people have so eloquently spoken to tonight, your decision about public benefit in the first denial summed it all up. We've seen the report from the 2019 Legislative Committee on Wasterecycling. There's plenty of capacity existing. Some may not be permitted yet, like the Mount Carberry Phase 3A landfill expansion. But that puts them out to 2041. And then you have what right now? Currently, 2034 for Turnkey. So right now, you have plenty of existing capacity that may not be permitted yet. And what's Casella doing? Their Plan B application, they've extended the life of the stage-six to 2026, which apparently is very minimal in terms of capacity in an effort to bypass this rule about public benefit. And if you look at, and I've studied the math. I've used their numbers and their calculations, and Mike Wimsat's calculations. And the math doesn't add up. Right now, by my calculations, the NCS landfill for stage-five is either overcapacity as of mid-June, or if you use Casella's latest 2019 numbers, and then again, you do the math, probably in the next two months, stage-five will be overcapacity. So there's no way, if you do the math, that stage-five is going to allow for stage-six to reach into 2026. So again, no public benefit for permitting this expansion. But again, I would like to reiterate, Sarah Dusset summed many of our testimonies up very eloquently. And I would certainly encourage New Hampshire DES to pay particular attention to her testimony. And I'd like to come back just for one more time. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Andrea Bryant, and following Ms. Bryant, we'll hear from Brian Cook. Ms. Bryant, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Andrea Bryant. I'm continuing from before. North Country Environmental Services is already polluting the environment, and it's been non-compliant with DES's permit and regulations many times during the year. They have received many letters of deficiency for violations, including curism liners, insufficient cover, and eroded runoff. So I pleaded with DES to abide by your emission statement of 149M. I'll skip it. And your emission statement, yeah. And then Bethlehem's voted about fourteen times to limit expansion because the people of Bethlehem believe it's our responsibility to protect the environment and our neighbors' health, and we need your support. It was, I believe it's irresponsible to grant this permit to increase the size of the landfill that's already failing and is managed. Putrid odors and intrusive noises in our homes, businesses, and yards. I have personally felt nauseated numerous times all in my yard from the odor. Nauseating odors are a combination of extensive garbage, sludge, and rotten eggs that come from greenhouse gases being released. When I make a call, it's interesting. The woman says, "Do you know what it smells?" You know, what it is? Yeah, I'm not on the hill. I have no idea. I just know that I'm getting sick. I don't open windows because if I do, it would be in my house. Many residents as well as tourists have been offended by these odors around town as they bypass NCS. The US EPA verifies that landfill gas causes adverse health effects and is a large contributor to greenhouse gases. So there's another reason to deny the permit. Speaking of toxic sludge, Bethlehem has, and Cheryl Jensen alluded to this earlier, Bethlehem has an ordinance, Article eight, no, Article seven, sorry, amended in March 2003. I haven't found what it was amended from, but it was in existence prior to that. And it says, "To protect the public health and welfare and protect surface and groundwater resources, the land spreading of stockpiling, processing, mixing, and/or any other treatment of municipal sludge, biosolids, and industrial paper mill sludge is not allowed in the town of Bethlehem." Therefore, NCS is currently violating this local ordinance. NCS doesn't report all the sludge that's being dumped as far as I have seen. And can't the sludge, oh, and then isn't the sludge a major contributor to the groundwater pollution? It's definitely creating air pollution. Of course, NCS denies odor and noise complaints. Here is an example of how NCS is not being forthright in these denials. Last fall, I contacted NCS and DES of an extreme noise complaint. I received an email from the manager of the landfill that said there's no way I was hearing loud noise. It was DES representative who informed me that the reason that it was so loud was that they were capping the section of the space in my house. A drive-by showed the bulldozers going up and down the hill, beeping back and forth, and the grinding noise that was disturbing my sleep and outside activities. Can I just interrupt this paragraph? And so therefore, it seems that if NCS can't be upfront, up up forthright and honest about this simple information, what else are they denying?
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Brian Cook, and then from Barton Flavich. Mr. Cook, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
All right, Brian Cook. Just three points. Couple of these points have already been made. It's just that the data shows that there is, there is not a capacity need for this expansion. This expansion terminating in 2026. There just isn't a need for it. Also, because of the location of the berm, this plan violates Bethlehem zoning. If there is to be an expansion, it needs to be kept within District Five. Otherwise, the town vote should occur whether to warrant going outside of District Five or not. And then the third point I want to make is, I'm an abutter to the landfill. A number of the abutters live on Route 302, Hatchell Lane. They're just right, they're right across to the landfill on the other side of the Ammanusa River. This year, you know, not only do they have the landfill to deal with, but on the adjacent land, I swear, there's a rock quarry pulling on over there. Just that the additional noise of metal on rock, rock on rock, I don't know what the machinery is that they're using. It sounds like a rock splitter. Two times a second. It's like a sludge camera hitting a damsel during daylight hours. Anyone outside their house in that proximity without a buffer of trees, I mean, it's enough to give you a mental headache. And just the fact that this type of activity, I mean, currently, the landfill's planned to be closed before 2021. This expansion is allowed. It's an additional five years that those residents need to deal with this additional noise for whatever reason, breaking in locks. Maybe they're using the locks, but the noise is unbelievable. There should be some sort of noise ordinance that's being violated here. But those are the three points I want to make. And I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Barton Flavich, and then from Michael Culver. Mr. Flavich, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by starting right by stating your name. You have the floor.
Michael Flavich. So I'll continue from my earlier statement. I think I ended where I said that the environmental activism from the seventies and eighties royals, that line landfill is like the one that Bethlehem is hosting on Tudor Road, and that DES is regulating. However, as we witnessed tonight, one cannot ignore the narrative that the residents of Bethlehem have lived through literally for decades now. Again, we're repeating assumptions here. Both sides, there aren't, something like a better word. And really, we shouldn't be objecting to a landfill that's well-managed, that's well-designed compared to what we used to live with in the state in the past with high landowners. The one thing I want us to note tonight is that the one thing that, that the Bethlehem opponents have done in this last year is really brilliant. And that is that they've turned over their, their fight playbook and their fight scare tactics and their fight new leadership against the landfill on Tudor Road to individuals and new groups from Dalton. And it's another group with their similar, with their similar not-on-the-backyard motives. And another group that will not let the facts get in the way of their continued narrative. Landfill equals pollution and cancer. What an absolutely brilliant move by Bethlehem environmentalists, in air quotes, passing the torch on to a town group, to an out-of-town group to carry on the fight. But it gets even further than that because this new effort, not just about closing the landfill on Tudor Road, their bigger picture, their zero-waste, is, means that Casella, as a company, should be around up in New Hampshire in its entirety. Forget about the transfer stations around the state, the garbage pickup around towns. Casella should not exist in the state of New Hampshire. You guys have to run them out. That's it. That's what we're asking. Regardless of how you regulate the landfills, regardless of double-line landfills, Casella cannot exist in the state of New Hampshire, regardless of what you think. So let me talk about the reasons why I favor this expansion and the use of expansions hopefully in Bethlehem. Bethlehem entered into the new host community determined in 2012. And since that time, Bethlehem is the only rural town in New Hampshire that is town-wide trash pick from Main Street to the last house on a dead-end country road. No other town in New Hampshire has that service. And I appreciate it because I don't have to drive to the landfill for a transfer station on a Saturday and live with the week.[1600.56] on a Saturday, a river week, comes to my house, picks up recyclables, picks up trash, and blows away. And the same host community agreement provided Bethlehem with significant financial contributions to our town revenues, which helped reduce taxes every year since 2012. Doesn't mean the taxes went down year to year, but they were significantly lower than they had at Wazoo. And I also want to spend a minute talking about you, our regulators. I've been listening to the minute after minute about the evils of the landfill on Truder Road for the last 12 years, yet the landfill continues to operate under your watchful eye, day after day, year after year, month after month, year after year.
It's time to wrap up your testimony.
Yeah, I have one more sentence. I'm really impressed and put at ease after reading your 2014 response to public comments where you combined...
Mr. Cook, thank you for your testimony. You made your name off the list again. It is now time to yield the floor. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we are going to hear from Michael Culver, and then we'll hear from Scott Stevenson. Mr. Culver, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor. How far we can't hear you, you ready to unmute yourself? Oh, you're in Bethlehem.
And I wasn't going to talk again, but since you called me up here, I guess I will. I just want to reiterate and extend what Martin was saying as far as, you know, the services that are being provided and the public benefit, just in our small community, you know, and kind of talk a little bit about how everybody has these great ideas of how we need to replace landfilling, but nobody has those great ideas. So let's stop landfilling without having any great ideas on how to fix the problem. And since we don't have those ideas, you know, I think we should definitely consider allowing the expansion. The town of Bethlehem itself, you know, we don't right now currently pay for our trash pickup, as Martin was saying, and we have zero sort recycling, which other towns in the area rely on. And without the Casella landfill, my guess is Casella and NCS zero sort goes away from the state area too, and what's going to replace that? You know, recycling is expensive right now, and we're lucky to have that, and to keep what's going in the landfill down. And without the expansion, we lose all that, and again, the revenue of the town of Bethlehem benefits from the tipping fees is irreplaceable. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Scott Stevenson, and then we'll hear from Julie Sealy. Mr. Stevenson, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Yes, my name is Scott Stevenson, and I would just like to comment on some of the pollution of the Ammanusick River that people have alluded to. As an over-60-year resident of Bethlehem, and over-35 years living next to the Ammanusick River, I can say that it is much cleaner than it was when I was a child, when all the businesses and towns from the Cog Railroad, the Mount Washington Hotels, and everyone else upstream, discharged sewer, all this epic sewer into the river. It is much cleaner than ever was. When we swam in as a teenager, there were all sorts of things floating by that came from that. It has not happened lately. It is much cleaner than ever, and I have not seen, in over-35 years of people saying it polluted, I have not seen any of these groups come up with an actual thing to prove their allegations. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Julie Sealy. Ms. Sealy, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Julie Sealy. I'd just like to expand a little bit on what Brian Cook was just talking about earlier, with going right up to the property boundaries. It's my impression that DES expects a buffer between the edge of a facility and the property boundary, and I would like to caution DES against ignoring that, against waiving that in any way, because I don't know what kind of precedent you're setting down the line. I'm sure NCS would argue that, well, they own the other property, but the fact is, it's okay, if it's a different property, they may not always own that property. It is a different district, it's District 2 instead of District, I believe District 2, instead of District 5, it's surely not District 5. I think, given that Casella contends towards, let's say, litigious, in the event that a landfill is eventually cited, God forbid near Forest Lake, and the state park isn't a priority, you set the precedent of saying that Casella can go right up to a property line with no buffer whatsoever. I think that's very unwise, and I think for that reason alone, this permit should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. We have now done two rounds of testimony, and if there were folks who spoke previously who would like to speak again, you may get your name off the list again. If you're in the public space, you can speak to the MHDES staff there that you would like to speak again. Or if you're joining us remotely, please provide your identifying information through the question box of your webinar, and we'll get you back on the list. Would you stop in a moment so that we collect the names of anyone who would like to speak again? I see that we do have individuals who would like to speak again. First will be John Swan, followed by Andrea Bryant. Mr. Swan, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is John Swan. First off, I'd like to start by saying that relative to the 2018 MOU agreement with Casella Waste Systems and the town of Bethlehem, I do see that with the other expansion of Casella, the proposed 500-plus acre landfill development in Dalton, that will be in violation of that 2018 MOU, because there is land outside of that District 5 that is zoned for landfilling, there's land in District 3 that is going to be required for access to that property, and thus will be in violation of Bethlehem zoning ordinance, as well as the 2018 MOU. So I wanted to state that. But two things, three things I wanted to kind of wrap up with. According to the RSA 149M, the department shall also consider as part of its public benefit determination, A, the concerns of the citizens and governing bodies of the host municipality. So I have in my hand a petition signed by over 100 Bethlehem residents with a list of reasons why New Hampshire DES should deny this permit, as well as call for closure of the landfill. So that is coming from 100, over 100 residents of the town of Bethlehem who are against this permit, against expansion, and want this landfill to finally be closed. Second, from the House Bill 1319 hearings this past spring, we learned from DES that a landfill expansion is considered actually a new landfill, and thus goes through the same process of a new landfill regarding background check. So I have also for the record that I want to submit is a five-page Excel spreadsheet that has a long history, and by far not even complete, of the lawsuits, violations, and fines of Casella Waste Systems in its various operations throughout the different states, from Maine to New York. It's a very long history of violations, lawsuits, and fines, including deaths, OSHA violations and whatnot, and I think that should be considered as part of the record relative to determining the fitness of this operator to run this landfill for a new expansion. And then, third, I just, like others, I want to remind New Hampshire DES of its mission statement, to sustain a high quality of life for all citizens by protecting and restoring the environment and public health in New Hampshire. So I ask DES, are you living up to that mission statement by permitting this unwanted and proven, unneeded expansion? Please, DES, do the right thing, both by following your own rules, regulations, but also apply some common sense, and maybe tap into your heart a little bit. Free the town of Bethlehem, let's close this chapter once and for all.
Time for you to wrap up your testimony.
Thank you so much, and thank you for this evening.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we are going to hear from Andrew Bryant, and then we'll hear from Martin Glavitt. Ms. Bryant, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Andrew Bryant. It's also responsibility of New Hampshire DES to protect the Ammanusick River. The seep is running into the river, it's been going on for years. At one time, the ES required the drainage channel, it can't be held up. Furthermore, as has already been mentioned, there is a lawsuit pending by the National Environmental Law Center on behalf of Toxic Action Center and Conservation Law Foundation challenging that the drainage channel that is flowing directly into the Ammanusick River is a violation of the Federal Clean Water Act. DES has a rule that if a court confirms of a lawsuit, it would prohibit expansion, and that's RSA 149M, hold it 12, criteria for approval suspension, gender indications, and I won't read back to you in this evening, but it's, well, no, it says, you know, if there's something that is a violation of federal law, you can't do it. So DES should at least hold off considering, but especially granting this permit until the court rules on whether or not the toxic seep is a violation of the Clean Water Act. How can DES approve a permit with uncertainty of a possible violation of the federal law? Has DES investigated the drainage channel recently for yourselves? Contamination of groundwater and the stratified drip act are under the landfills a major concern. In 2019, a report said that there are tears of liners. These tears are an indication of what's to come with respect to leaks and contamination. Water tests have for years shown dangerous level of toxins such as anticoagulant, one four dioxide, and arsenic. There are elevated levels of leachate between the primary and secondary liners. Through recent tests by Sandborne and Ed, proved elevated toxins in test wells. There are many homes, including my own, I believe, that are tapped into wells into the aquifer. Allowing more trash will just make this faulty system even worse. How long will it be before those of us in Bethlehem find ourselves in the same predicament as contaminated wells in Southridge, Massachusetts? It only takes looking at the landfill to see it's towering over the tree. This could be another violation. The settlement agreement and your regulations say that it may not exceed 1,000 to 83 feet above. Yes. DES, I mean, NCS has been noncompliant in years over many other things. So what proof is there that they are not, I'm trying to, I'm making up, they're in compliance with the height? When was the last time DES had a survey or check the height? And this should be found out for sure before any permit is granted. I'm almost done, but I'll come back.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Martin Glavitt. And at this time, I would ask that anyone who's interested in participating in the fourth round of testimony begin providing your information. Mr. Glavitt, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Martin Glavitt. Continuing with my statement from earlier, I left off where I said about talking about myths versus reality. Landfilling for years under the watchful eye of the DES, day after day, month after month, year after year. And I was really impressed and put at ease after reading your, your 2014 response to public comments after the public hearing for Stage 5 expansion. And every myth and accusation towards DES and towards NCS has been debunked in this document since then. We're talking about DES decision-makers are not objective, debunked. Granting the permit is not in keeping with the purpose of the mission statement, debunked. And there's a whole list in here that you can read, that I can submit, that statement after statement is debunked. Air quality has been diminished because of landfill, debunked. Groundwater protection on Aquifer explains in detail what the Aquifer is and how that's been allowed, and how that's been debunked. But at the end of it all, there's a big difference between myths that were created and maintained for over 25 years, and reality of the landfill through, as a view, our state regulators. Unfortunately, there's nothing you can say to convince one of our landfill opponents tonight, or of the years in town and state, to change your mind about the landfill on Truder Road. There's also a lot of things that the commentators might know about District 5 and District 2. And the town has shared with public, when this latest settlement in 2018 about the tax payment was announced, that the service road outside of District 5 and District 2 will not be challenged. They know that, yet they would bring it to your attention, yet they know that the town will not oppose that, because that is a violation of the settlement agreement. That was publicly explained by the Select in 2018. I want to throw another food for thought here, you know, they say that you can regulate other options for waste disposal in New Hampshire. You can do, you did a great job regulating the Mount Carberry landfill, and the Terrance landfill, but the Truder Road landfill, you don't have to regulate that, obviously, because it's on Truder Road, and that's not, that's not the way to regulate it. I trust your regulators, the job you do as a regulator, and I know that the town of Bethlehem Select would trust you, because they would not have agreed to not have proposed this expansion otherwise. And so, in conclusion, I would respectfully ask you to approve this proposed expansion. The town of Bethlehem has nothing to be liberated from, or freed from. It's been a great partnership for years, and I hope we can continue through 2026, and maybe find a solution to keep the Bethlehem hosting the landfill beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Andrea Bryant. Ms. Bryant, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Andrea Bryant. I just had to just kind of repeat what others have said about public benefit, that's in my statement, but I will look over it. By Carvery has space, and also, so finally, DES has known for years, the NCS landfill has frequently been no liquid, and noncompliant with following the rules set forth in the operating permit, 149M and the 800s. A few of the noncompliant areas that tests have shown, or DES personnel have reported, and are witness in NCS during random site visits over the years include problems with polluting groundwater, insufficient cover, not reporting required leachate data, sediment blockage, blocking drainage, colder, accepting asbestos, landfilling, cut load of American flies, odor noise migrating off-site, I'm open every morning, I love Sundays, attracting wild animals such as bears and ravens, having storm drains, fast spilling and running out of room for New Hampshire waste, otherwise they would be in such a rush, still and spilling leachate. How many more protocols set forth by waste management rules and important procedures are there that were made to protect the environment and well-being of the town are being investigated or violated, since NCS does not follow the rules that are set up by NCS to deny this permit in order to stop the landfill from further jeopardizing the health of residents of Bethlehem and the Ammanusick River watershed? It is the duty of New Hampshire DES to investigate, I hope, the concerns that we've all brought up thoroughly, and answer all our questions that have been done during this public period. And I hope that these come out before the decision is rendered. I think you've done well the last time, but I know there's been times that we haven't known the answers until afterwards. After doing so, I think there should be enough evidence to deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Rita Farrell. Ms. Farrell, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name.
Please. You can go, please.
Just come up to the mic.
Just state your name.
Let me take the mic, I'll state your name, and the mic's already on.
My name is Rita Farrell. And I've been in the struggle to keep Bethlehem a clean, wonderful town since 1988, when the first proposal was made. I'm looking to it, I'm already getting the screen straight ahead of me.
Yeah, there's no video feed, so they're just hearing your audio through that microphone right in front of you.
Oh, okay, so it hasn't been on yet?
It's on, no, you're being recorded, they hear you.
Thank you, sorry, I might keep on.
Oh, it's quite all right.
On a throwback to Megabone. So I've been in this since the 1980s, when a group of people in this town came down to our place in Bethlehem Junction, where we lived at the time, which is just to the side of Truder Road, and said that there's going to be a landfill over on the, next to the White Mountain National Forest, above the aquifer, underneath, alongside the Ammanusick River, and within immediate distance of scores of homes that live there. Would you help us out? Would you come? So I did. And that's been how many years now? We keep going around the corner, keep going around the circles and circles, and keep talking about the need to continue doing this to Bethlehem, and has been done. So I'd like to cite one big example. Any of you familiar with the Mountain View Hotel in Whitefield? Beautiful hotel, and it was boarded up for quite a while. And a new owner came along and wanted to reconstruct the whole hotel and make it a lovely-looking place, and get new customers, and opened it all up. The biggest mistake he made was to tear down the asbestos from the walls of the hotel rooms. And that information got to the attorney, the district attorney, or the attorney general, rather, for the state of New Hampshire. And that gentleman was told that he had violated a very strong law in New Hampshire. And, uh, that gentleman was told that he had violated a very strong law in New Hampshire. And as a result of that, he was found guilty of having violated the law. And he was then sent to jail for thirty days with a small fine. But that was because he had asbestos. Tearing it down has to be treated in a certain, very special way because of its danger to the health and well-being of people, citizens. Yeah, asbestos, as everybody knows, or may, maybe most of us know, is a very dangerous and very harmful to the human being. It gets in your lungs and it can destroy, and we don't have it around here, do we? However...
Ms. Farrell, we need to ask you to wrap up your testimony. And we will, you may get yourself added to the list again if you would like to proceed with your testimony.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you.
It's time, it's time to finish your testimony. Red card indicates that your three minutes is up, but you are welcome to request from the NHDES staff and that, um, another opportunity to speak.
No, I want to finish what I'm saying here and you can pull me away if you want to. I'm going to tell you what happened then. Because that asbestos was pulled down, then I, I request another chance to speak tonight. I can especially...
Oh, yes. You can absolutely come back.
So anyways, I can come back from there and then speak.
Anytime you want.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll finish.
All right. I'm going to ask that folks who are listening remotely or in Bethlehem indicate to us that they are ready to provide testimony again if they would like to. And we, you have someone who would like to provide testimony? Mr. Paul Nidico will provide testimony. Ms. Nidico, when I turn the floor over to you, please start by stating your name. You will need to unmute yourself first. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Paul Nidico. We're new to the Bethlehem area and I want to express my appreciation for the chance to participate in this. Uh, we did, even though we're new here, we drive by often, really often, like every day or two, drive by the site. I have, we haven't noticed any smell yet, but we don't live right next to it. We live a little bit, but we do live right off the Amundsen River though and agree that it's a clean river, especially considering where I came from. Uh, I was distraught, distressed when the snow melted and I saw the actual property where I lived was covered with trash, considering the trash pickup is free here. And I appreciate that the company has taken nearly all the trash that we think about the property free because it was all recyclable. Uh, and I did, do want to mention that I had a water test and I had to in order to buy the property and it came out clean. There were no flutes of any significant measure of my water here on this property. Uh, and as far as bears coming to the dump, I, I would kind of welcome that because then they wouldn't bother the house here, they live so well. But, uh, that compromise to me seems like it might be that we could just ask that the, you could ask that the, uh, that you could expand, extend the contract while also requiring not, not, not releasing them of the waiver that they're receiving, which would require the additional layer of protection, that would be kind of a compromise, is a might be. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Rita Farrell.
Unmuted.
Ms. Farrell, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you. Don't put the clock on till I get ready. The asbestos from that White Mountain, from the Mountain View Hotel was trucked by order of the owner of the hotel, from the hotel in Whitefield to the Bethlehem landfill, North Country Environmental Services, three times a week, for three years, went over the scale, and that was brought to the end of the landfill in Bethlehem, which was a violation not only of the tier down, but of the deposit of asbestos in a place that is not qualified to take it. At that time, my family lived down in the junction and we had one window open to the, in the direction south of where the landfill was because we were just off Trudeau Road. And every night at midnight, we'd smell some smoking, you know, choking odor, the smoky odor. I thought, well, they burn trash at night. Last month, my husband died of asbestos. The only way you get asbestos is if you are in a place that has asbestos in the air area. He never worked in anything that had anything like that. He was a DuPont engineer and lived in Wilmington, Delaware. During that time, the attorney general found that the owner was guilty of having asbestos burned at the landfill and the landfill took it in and burned it three times a week. The trucks would come and three times a week, they'd go to the landfill and North Country Environmental Services. That time coincided with my husband's diagnosis several years later of asbestos. He just passed away a month ago and the diagnosis then was that he had diagnosed, he had asbestos. It said asbestos will get you every time. That shocked me. That shocked me because I thought that's what it was. We knew that he had signs of it all the time, there was asbestos, yes, he had eczema, but he didn't smoke anymore. So whatever it was, it was asbestos, he said that it gets you. And that's what the, the nurse that made the decision about what the cause of death was, maybe just verbally, I don't know, haven't seen the papers yet. That's just one example, but a horrible one. And Casella was fined by the attorney general. They made a deal, they said, okay, we'll, we'll, we won't put you on trial, we'll just make a deal. Um, that was attorney general at that time. And the deal was that Casella would pay five hundred thousand dollars to a nearby, um, organization, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to be mentioned, uh, organization that, um, had beautiful surroundings.
I'm asking you to wrap up your testimony and we'll see if there's anyone else who would like to turn to speak. Thank you for your testimony.
I'll come back again.
And thank you for testimony. If you would like to get on the list again, please let the, uh, staff in Bethlehem know. If we have anyone participating remotely not from Bethlehem, please to run their identifying information in the question box on code two webinar and we'll add you to the list. If you're in Bethlehem, please raise your hand and indicate to the NHDES staff that you would like to be added to the list again and bring your testimony. If anyone in Bethlehem has not yet given testimony and would like to, please fill out a testimony card and provide it to the NHDES staff.
Hi, Sarah. Sarah, can you hear me? This is Mike. Hello, Sarah? I can go ahead and speak.
Next, we are going to hear from Gina Revellard.
Unmuted.
When I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name. You have the floor.
Thank you, Gina Revellard. I wasn't, I wasn't going to come up here again, um, but Mr. Glavik's comments sort of jobbed a few things that I thought would be important to say. One of those is, okay, folks, look, we all know that there is adequate capacity in the state of New Hampshire without Casella. We don't need expansion in Bethlehem. We don't need a new landfill in Dalton. And Mr. Glavik is correct. It is time for Casella to close up shop and go back to where they came from. All things come to an end. Please let this be Casella's. And for the love of God, please don't let them ruin another town and another watershed in the North Country. I know this is not, um, about Dalton or about Forest Lake, but that is what I'm referencing. Now, I'm not speaking as a conservation commission member, but I have been a member of the Bethlehem Conservation Commission and the property in question there was, uh, there was a permit for a drag strip. We provided commentary and it was denied because the driveway alone, which was in Bethlehem, and this is my point, the driveway to this landfill will be in Bethlehem.
I want you to, if you're going to take your testimony related to concerns regarding the landfill expansion process in Bethlehem.
Yes, there's, it's, it's Bethlehem-related. There was way too much, um, uh, wetlands to permit even a driveway. So anyway, I'm just...
Your comments are not, uh, the object again.
Yep, I get that.
The extension application that NHDES has in hand.
Yep.
Please bring...
Okay, well, then I'll cut to the chase. Look, we all know we don't need this company, we don't need their landfill here, we don't need another landfill in the North Country, we have plenty of capacity. End of story. Time to end it. Now, here for good. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Rita Farrell. Ms. Farrell, when I turn the floor over to you, please begin by stating your name.
I'm sorry.
You have the floor.
Yes, sorry, uh, this is not a great testimony. My name is Rita Farrell and I want to finish my story. My husband died of the diagnosis of asbestos. It only happens where there is asbestos. And that was just last month. And Bethlehem tried very hard to determine whether the incidence of malignant cancer was higher in Bethlehem than in other surrounding towns. And we had an excellent report, unfortunately excellent, because it showed that, yes, there is that problem. And that was cut short because we could no longer get the information we needed from The owners of the Casella Waste Systems Corporation, I'm one of them, I bought shares in the company so I could go to the meetings every year and I do that. I don't have that many that makes any difference that I would want. And the only people that are there are Mr. Casella, who is very amiable and affable and always says hello. And there's nobody else at the meeting, no shareholders, because they're all investors in institutional organizations. So they're happy as long as the company makes, keeps making money, even though they always split the income. It is time, it's long past time, for the Department of Environmental Services, for the Department of Environmental Services to come to its senses, or at least its own sense of fairness and justice and good health of the people of the state of New Hampshire and say, this is not something that we need, we have capacity, and if we didn't have capacity, we'd find a better place to put it than in the middle of the White Mountain National Forest, on top of the lodge aquifer, next to the Amundsen River, within the households of several dozens of people and people leaving aggravated all these years, over and over since the nineteen eighties, because somebody wants to make billions. They're billionaires now. Good luck to them. But not in their town do they have a landfill, not in Rutland. And so DES, I don't know why, because it doesn't make any sense, but at that time, when they were, when they were burning stuff from the hotel, the Kelly Ayar was the attorney general, her people made it necessary for her to hold up, uh, here, but she didn't want it because she was also okay about having a place there because it didn't bother her. And so I'm asking the Department of Environmental Services to please give us environmental service and not illness and odors and choking notes and, and raptors coming in, birds, whatever it is. It's too late now, you can't recover. You can't recover the river at that area. And we had a campground there, would never go down there again, right after the bridge. And therefore, I'm in a butter still, even though we moved into the village. And you can't recover the aquifer. And you can't recover the number of people that have had a higher incidence of cancer in this town than the surrounding towns. We had some of that evidence and now we can't get it anymore. But you can stop it now. Mr. Glavik and others who have spoken for it don't live there. They don't have any illness from that. They don't have the odors and the choking and somebody coming up and saying, I don't smell anything, of the landfill. Amazing. These people from the landfill that say, I don't smell anything, I wonder why they say that, when everybody else is gagging and being sick and having to close their windows. I'm in downtown Bethlehem now. But I know it's likely looks that way. Please, please do the right thing and do it by Dalton, a beautiful town, a beautiful lake. I just went there for the first swimming years. It's just gorgeous.
I'm asking you to leave your testimony to the project that's at hand in Bethlehem.
You asked me why? Why am I restricted to do that? Because we see a, a, a complete copy of what's going on. What's the difference if it's Bethlehem or any type? If it's sandwich, it's sandwich. The law is the law. Is it violating the law?
Our business is carried through...
Make up your own line. Thank you, I'm all done. Thank you. Thank you. No, it's a line. Line, line, line.
Thank you for your testimony. Seeing no one else who wishes to provide oral testimony, I'm going to prepare to close the hearing. Based on testimony received earlier this evening, as the hearing officer, I have decided to extend the public comment period that I've written, uh, the written comment period until September eighteenth. So please understand that written comments can be submitted to the department up until four P. M. on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. They can be emailed or submitted by mail and directions for submitted written comments are provided in the public notice for this hearing, which you can find on the NHDES website. Before closing the hearing, I'm going to confirm that we're still connected to Bethlehem. Director Winstuff, would you please confirm that you can still hear us on the air?
Yes, you're still connected and we can see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Point and border, can we attend the deliberation of the Department of Environmental Services when it listens to this testimony and discusses it? Is that an open forum?
No, it is not.
Is there a reason?
I think we, I'll be happy to speak to you afterwards, but we, right now, this is the hearing.
The hearing. I am going to clarify that, as I just changed the date that written testimony is due, the slide needs to be updated. So while the slide says September eighth, the due date is September eighteenth and we will post that on our website. I understand that we're connected to Bethlehem. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to participate in this public hearing. This hearing is hereby closed at eight thirty-five P. M.